This is a meeting of the Winnie County Community School District, regular school board meeting. It is August 19th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. We are in the Winnie County High School Commons. Meeting notices were sent to members of the press, members of the school board, and were posted on the front doors and/or in the vestibules of district's school buildings. This is a meeting of the board in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public hearing. There may be a time for public comment as indicated in the agenda. The meeting will also be available to watch live at www.youtube.com/winnicani. If you are able, please rise and join me in the pledge, and the flag is in the rear. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Board members, roll call, please.
Stelzner.
Here.
Verich.
Here.
Keller.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Ackman.
Here.
Cundy.
Here.
Hanson. Here. Recognizing our administrative team, we have Dr. Larson, Mr. Jeribek, Mrs. Mitchler, Mrs. Dodd, Dr. Mashad, Mr. Dobner, Mr. Manier, Mrs. Knapp, Mrs. Horvath, and Mr. Schrader, so I'm so sorry. I think that's it. Okay. And for visitor recognition, we do have a visitor sign-up sheet in the back, so if you are here and even if you don't intend to speak, we do ask that you sign in so that we have a record of who attended. We also have with us sitting at the table is Attorney Jeff Lacy, who is sitting in for Mr. Tony Renning, who is on vacation. Now is time for the open forum. I'm just going to highlight our policy here. Anyone having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board may comment during the public portion of a meeting. Attendees must register their intention to comment in the public portion of the meeting upon arrival at the meeting. So I have the list of people who have expressed an interest to speak, and I will call on them. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, their address, their group affiliation, if and when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes' duration. We will be timing, just so that everyone has a chance to speak. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to the staff or other participants. Participants shall address only topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. I hope this won't happen, but we do have the ability to interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. We may request any individual to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. We can request assistance of law enforcement officers if necessary, or call for a recess or adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. We may also waive rules with approval of the board when necessary for the protection of privacy or the administration of the board's business. So with that, I will open up the open forum. Obviously, we have a microphone, so please approach the microphone and say your name, address, and if you are with a group.
Did you want, did you want an introduction?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, go ahead. Yes, Mr. Lacy, Attorney Lacy is going to make a little bit of a statement as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to respect the reason I was asked to come here, I guess. But so a few things, I understand the board is on the agenda tonight, the Title IX policy that was adopted previously by the board, and expect that at least some of the comments would be related to that. So I just wanted to make a couple of opening statements regarding that policy and regarding the regulations. First of all, you know, my role is to tell the board, to advise the board what the law is, not what the law should be, or what I wish the law was, but what in fact the law currently is. And, excuse me, with respect to the Department of Education's regulations that are at issue in litigation, you know, all throughout the country, right now in Wisconsin, those regulations are current law. There are limited enforcement restrictions that govern the Department of Education relative to that due to some of these decisions, but it doesn't change the fact that in Wisconsin, those regulations are law. So like I said, there is quite a bit of litigation, but that's pretty common when the federal government in particular adopts, passes regulations or even statutes, but typically regulations. There is frequently challenges to those, I want to make sure I'm actually talking into the microphone, I apologize. There are frequently challenges to those regulations, and while those challenges work their way through, oftentimes there are preliminary measures like preliminary injunctions and so forth. And our role is to make sure that we're, you know, keeping track of that and making sure that to the extent that we still have to comply with those regulations until such time as there are significant changes, they're withdrawn, a court that has jurisdiction over us here in Wisconsin, rules to the contrary, we're required to follow them. So the board, excuse me, the board adopting the policy as many boards have, you know, either reluctantly or what have you, is not a recognition that the underlying concepts contained within those regulations that do make regulatory changes to the definition of sex discrimination, which has been the source of much of the litigation. Rather, the board's responsibility is to put the school district in a position to be complying with the law. And oftentimes, that means adopting policies that don't necessarily fit the preference or the desire of the board or individual members of the board, but nonetheless, their role as elected officials is to make sure the school district is following the law. I did want to make mention of a recent development on Friday, August 16th, sorry, the US Supreme Court issued an order, and there's been a lot of misunderstanding or confusion about the significance of that order. So without going into too much of the mundane and boring nuances of, you know, federal court jurisdiction and so forth, what happened in that case has nothing to do with the merits of the challenges to the regulations. What it was is a fairly unusual, but not totally unusual, effort by the Department of Education to ask the Supreme Court to intervene in litigation that is ongoing in multiple different courts across the country, both at the district court level, which is kind of the lowest, the trial court, and then also at the Court of Appeals level, which are the circuit courts, to intervene in those and to lift certain injunctions that had been issued or to modify those injunctions. And all the court did was say, "The government has not made a sufficient showing that there is a compelling basis for it, the Supreme Court, to get involved in cases that are happening at the lower-level courts." It takes an extraordinary circumstance for the Supreme Court to jump into cases at that point. They're a case, or they're a court of last resort. They only take cases once they've made their way all the way up through the court system, and then they resolve, you know, disagreements among the various circuit courts typically. So they do reference the standard, which is the standard for preliminary injunction, which is that the plaintiffs have satisfied the court that issued the injunction, that there is a likelihood of success on the merits. That's just the standard that always exists for preliminary injunction. And all the Supreme Court said is, "We don't see any basis to upset the decisions that have been made by those lower courts." So ultimately, the only way the Supreme Court's going to issue a decision that speaks to the merits of these challenges is if it accepts a case that has been ruled on by an appellate court. There's cases in the Sixth Circuit, the Tenth Circuit, the Fourth Circuit, and probably others as well right now. One of those cases ultimately, or several, could be consolidated and end up before the court, the Supreme Court, but as of now, they have decided not to do anything, essentially, is what that decision means. So I just wanted to put that out there and hopefully clarify that a little bit. I know there's a lot of information suggesting that the court has taken a position on the regulations, and I'm telling you that that is not an accurate statement, that right now in Wisconsin, because of the Seventh Circuit, which has ruled on some of the substantive components, not the regulations, but the statute, and then also the fact that Wisconsin is not a party to these cases, and the individual districts remain, you know, responsible for, subject to those regulations, with the limited exception that the Department of Ed has been stripped of enforcement authority in certain instances. So I think, unless there's any questions or clarifications on any of that, I think it's appropriate to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. John Lexander.
Good evening, board members, families, parents, concerned citizens, staff and faculty. I hope everyone's doing well this evening. I know there's a lot of people that have a lot of different things to say, so I'm going to keep this short and sweet. Following the Wisconsin Public Records Law Compliance Guide provided me by the Wisconsin Department of Justice, Attorney General Josh Call, I am giving you a notice of open records request. This will be oral, but I will also hand each one of you a copy of this. This is a formal, I'm issuing this August 19th, 2024. This is a formal request under the Wisconsin Public Records Law that I receive copies of the following at your earliest convenience, but within 10 days of receipt of this request. I would like a copy of the signed oaths of office of all Winnie County school board members. I would like a copy of the certi-bond holders for each Winnie County school board member. I would like copies of all email exchanges between Winnie County school board members, between Winnie County school board members and the Winnie County District Administrator, and between Winnie County school board members, the Winnie County District Administrator, and the school superintendent from the period of July 26, 2024, through today, August 19, 2024. This is to include both private and public email addresses when emails on private email addresses pertain to school matters. In addition, I would like copies of all email exchanges on both public and private emails between Winnie County school board members, the Winnie County District Administrator, and the Winnie County Legal Representation to include Tony Renning and/or any other employees at Renning, Lewis, and Lacy between the same period of July 26, 2024, through today, August 19, 2024, limited to pertaining to any Wisconsin school policies and/or Title IX revisions not encompassed under Wisconsin State Statute 90503, lawyer-client privilege. Please notify me via text or email at the contact information below that I will provide on this document when they are available.
Oh, that's two minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Could I, one more quick, short statement?
Two minutes, I'm sorry, we really got to limit it. Next up, and I apologize if I say your name wrong, but some of the handwriting is a little hard to, Conley, Conley Hanson?
Thank you, everyone. My name is Conley Hanson. I am here in a very different capacity to address something that I have noticed. I am a student of not only the law, but of the rules. I have done a deep dive in the last two and a half years to Wisconsin state statutes, Wisconsin law, including Chapter 5 of Wisconsin Open Meetings laws. Yep. I noticed on July 15th, at the time mark of 1 hour and 55 minutes, there was a motion to approve 2264, and it failed with a recorded 4-3 vote. On the recording, I heard someone ask about bringing it back. I urge you to be very cautious. You can't do that. I caution the school board and all committees and boards throughout Wisconsin that you are perhaps teetering on one or more rule violations. And I go to Wisconsin Chapter 5 Open Meetings law, be really careful, and I think that might be where this gentleman is going, with violating walking quorums and negative quorums. And the reason that I come to that, also having done a deep dive with Robert's Rules of Order, which also governs our boards, 2264 was put back on the August agenda, August 5th agenda. During that meeting, at time mark 137, I believe it was Member Peterson made a motion to table, to a second in November. The motion was seconded by this gentleman, I don't, I think Ackerman? Unfortunately, the board, or the chair, then said, "I want to make sure that all questions are answered." Can't do that. The motion on the floor must be entertained to table. That was the only discussion that you can have at that point. Ultimately, that did fail. Where I urge caution was at, is that two minutes?
Yes.
It was at, I am so sorry.
Quickly, please.
At time mark 1 hour and 43 minutes, there was a motion to approve 2264. It is my opinion that without having a motion to reconsider, all of that is null and void. Thank you.
Kaylee O'Clair. Am I saying that right? Kaylee. K-A-Y-L-E-E. Mandy Otto.
Good evening, school board. Can you hear me?
Can you speak close?
I'm really short. Good evening, school board and parents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding the Title IX revision. My name is Amanda Otto. I'm the wife of a Winnie County alumni and the mother of five children, ages nine to 17. Oh, thank you. So I have children in each of these schools. I need to make one thing very clear. By me being against the current policy and the Biden-Harris revision has nothing to do with ignorance, hate, or bigotry. It has to do with what is right. It has to do with a group of hate-filled people who are trying to push their political agendas on our youth and down our throats. The facts and what is right will never change. The fact is, unless you were born an earthworm or a clownfish, you're either a male or a female. I have no anger or hatred towards anybody who wants to pretend these facts simply don't exist. I do believe there are children who are struggling with their identities. I do not for one second believe any child, no matter what their struggles are with their bodies, mentally or physically, should ever be teased, bullied, looked down upon, or treated as any less than any other child. Every child should have the right to attend school and feel safe while there. Adapting this amendment violates Wisconsin State Statute 225.50, to, number one, right to privacy. Under this law, invasion of privacy means intrusion upon the privacy of another in a nature highly offensive to a reasonable person in a place that a reasonable person would be considered private. It is reasonable to inspect privacy in the bathrooms in a locker room. Any reasonable person would feel offended and violated if someone of the opposite sex walked in while they were using the bathroom or locker room. So I ask you, are you guys reasonable people? Based on the most recent Winnie County newsletter that went out last week, in my opinion, I would say no. To quote Peggy, if a student... Can I finish? I'm going to finish my quote.
You, one, no, I mean, I have to cut it at two minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's okay. Can you call the next person?
I'm sorry. Okay. The next person on the list is Ryan, Ryan Toto?
Otto.
Otto, okay, sure.
When does my time start? Oh, darn it. If a student wishes to use a bathroom or locker room different from the assigned one, they will need to meet with a school counselor to discuss the request. You now want us to believe that within the 150 pages of the amendment, that a school counselor has the right to decide if a child is transgender or not, and they say yes or no, and using whatever facility they would like, question mark. That doesn't seem like something that this amendment would be in favor of. In fact, it sounds quite contrary. According to the lawyer, no one has the right to prohibit anyone from using the bathroom. So what version would you like us to believe in? You also tried to appease everyone who was against the amendment by stating, "If I choose an option," meaning that the boy or girl in the wrong facility chooses, is discomforted by other students, "we would also provide alternatives to adjust their concerns." That's your quote. Really, what you mean is that the rest of these students would be made to find somewhere else to go. Based on the real-life example given in the last meeting, where this is the exact alternative solution, it's completely unreasonable to displace and punish those students who are feeling uncomfortable. feeling uncomfortable. I beg each and every one of you to stop reacting out of fear, stand up for what you know is right, the protection of our children in our district. If our district's goal is truly learning today, leading tomorrow, I implore you to lead today so our children can learn tomorrow. The Biden-Harris provisions of Title IX is not the way to lead this district. As an alumni, as a parent, and as a youth pastor, I'm only filling in for my wife at this point, so I'd like you to understand it's a proxy speech. My vote is against Title IX revision, but I want to also say that in deep prayer and consideration for the pride and the respect that I do have for this administration, the parents, everybody on both sides of this argument, my heart is breaking that we have to be here at this time, but I know that with caution and with patience and kindness, we will figure it out. I have hope in our future. I'm sad that the innocence of our children have been somewhat robbed because we're talking about it, but at the end of the day, we will figure this out. And I just implore people to have kindness and respect regardless of where you stand on the subject.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Vandenberg. Just a couple of quick things. I just find it fascinating, this whole process of working through laws and dealing with this whole thing. I hope all the teachers are talking with their students and what's going on and how this is getting solved. I know I've heard a couple of people say, "We can't do anything because it's the law. We have to do this." Well, there are ways to change laws. That's why we live in a great country of the United States. We can change laws. People in a little town of Winnicott County can rise up and push back on the federal government. We can have lawsuits. We can do things that actually change laws. We don't just have to say, "Oh, I can't do anything." We, in a little community like this, can do something. And the other thing I wanted to mention, totally different subject, I found out just recently, maybe you guys don't even know this, there's a policy for the community members who find a book in the library that is inappropriate, there's a policy to get it removed from the library. I just found this out. The librarian helped me very much, Dave's wife. She was very helpful in finding this policy. She said she didn't even know it existed, which is maybe kind of sad. I've had four kids come through the system and they've never even looked in the library. I didn't even know that I could, or that there were books in there that maybe shouldn't be in there, or whatever. And she said, "Wow, jeez, nobody's ever asked about that before." So we found this policy. There's a committee that was formed to review, when you fill out this policy, that I have a complaint about a book, there's a committee that was formed just recently because I found a policy and filled it out. And so now, there's a process that people can go through to say, "Hey, there's a book in the library that's kind of questionable." And we can at least bring it to somebody's attention, whether it solves the problem or not, I guess, so.
Thank you. Heidi Henke?
So all of us got to see the videos of the last school board meeting, and then we also got to see the taped interview that our student administrator did. And I found it really disturbing because there were flat-out omissions of lies put in that. And the perfect example is once again, my son, the boys who were in the gym class, and all the male students who attended Winnicott County High School in the fall of 2021 and through 2022. Peggy stated that they are going to go through a very rigorous, you know, sit down, talk about it, come up with a plan, have strategies, make sure that, you know, the trans or the person who identifies as a trans was going to have many options. Well, guess what? They did the same thing with this particular student who identified as a male back in 2021. But guess what? The law was on her side, or his side. They said, "No, thanks. I'm not going to go with this plan. I'm going to use the locker rooms, and I'm going to use the bathrooms that I want anytime I want." And that is why the boys in the gym class had to be subjected to changing and taking off their clothes in front of this identified male student. But we don't see it that way. In every aspect, she was still a female. Those boys were humiliated, they were upset, they were embarrassed, they were disgusted. My son ended up going to confession. Hey, this is what happened. Was I wrong, priest? What do I do for my penance now? In addition to that, I asked Peggy flat out, "I don't understand why you couldn't have sent out a letter letting every male student know, or their parents know, that this was going to be something that they could at least maybe talk about before the school year started, so they could prepare for it, so that they could be safe?" Well, again, she has rights, we can't do that. So really, one student was allowed the rights while all the rest had theirs taken away and were subjected to embarrassment, shame, having her in the bathrooms and in the locker rooms. And that is not right.
I'm not sure I can read this. Melissa Trider, I'm sorry, Melissa? Yes, if you please state your name and address, please, as you approach, we haven't been doing that.
Hi, I'm Melissa Trider. I live in the town of Oshkosh, but I'm in the Winnis County School District. I am here just to say thank you to three individuals. Can you all hear me?
Not real well, no.
I just, I'm here, is that better?
Yeah.
I'm here just to thank three individuals on board who voted no on the Title IX policies. And I believe that is you, Megan Keller, you, Mr. Peterson, and you, Mr. Ackman. Is that correct? I want you to know that I appreciate, I don't know if it was an easy no for you, or if you had to do some dig-deeping and some moral inventory, but I want to say thank you. Keep fighting for our kids, keep speaking up even when it's hard, and God bless you.
Bonnie Blink? Nope, okay.
Well, since there's only two minutes and I could talk for two hours right now, I'm going to have to change it up a little bit. All right, since it's only two minutes and I could talk for two hours right now, I'm going to have to simplify this a little bit. I would like to ask if you put on the agenda either, well, we have Title IX on the agenda tonight, so I believe someone could make a motion to get a second opinion, it's plain simple. Did anybody watch the Oshkosh School Board on Wednesday? Anybody here? I wonder if anybody over there watched it? Probably not. And you have another lawyer sitting there with a second opinion that's way different than yours, so you tell him you're smarter than him? Are you smarter than him? The University of Wisconsin Systems do not, they put this on hold because of the court injunction, but you guys are smarter than them, apparently. And there's plenty of other school districts in this state that have voted this down. It is plain and simple. So what makes you, you four, think that you are smarter and better than their decisions? And also, people, pay attention, five weeks ago, I was the only person here when Title IX was originally on the agenda, all right? Then we had 10 the next time, good, we have 100 now, that's awesome. But don't go away. I mean, we've had some really great changes on this board. The three newest members are light years ahead of the other four, and they all were added in the...
Adam, I'm going to ask you to...
I have a First Amendment right. All right, I'm going to stop.
Not to be nasty to people.
Oh, okay. So let's, yeah, like her laughing right there, Winnicott County News, that's professional. Thank you. Keep politics off the board, right, Becky? So anyway, five weeks ago, I know, hold on, I'm sorry, Q and A, I want a Q and A. We need a lawyer, Q and A, let us have conversations with a lawyer. It doesn't have to be a school board meeting. Let's have a Q and A so we can ask a lawyer. And I would ask for a second opinion, someone, please, one of the three good ones. Ask for a second opinion from Von Rees and Roper, the same lawyer that was at the Oshkosh School Board Wednesday night, please. And also, I won't have time to address this, but Jackie, thank you for asking the questions if, what if a child would decide to change her sex that morning? Would a boy be able to go, would a girl be able to go into the boys' bathroom? And Peggy, you admit it, although her Wednesday email said the exact opposite, that we all see. Do you think we're stupid? Do you think we're not going to spread this around? I mean...
Thank you, Adam.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jack, and I recognize almost all of you immediately because I have grown up in this building literally from the time I could walk. Unlike Adam, I do not believe any of you is above each other, and I know that regardless of our disagreements right now, you are all interested in making this educational system as effective and memorable for our students as much as our parents are. Now, I do disagree with your decision that you voted for, but I am not going to stoop to anyone's level, put signs about you on my lawn, or say anything that completely lowers, well frankly, my point of being here right now. I don't know where I would be without all of you today, and I know it is due to you that we have many, many things to brag about our district being head and shoulders above the crowd in this area. I do ask you to consider everyone's point of view because they do mean it, they don't have bad intentions behind it, and we are stronger together as a community than we are divided like this. As the Bible says, "A house divided upon itself will fall." So we are one house, let's stay that way, and let's come to a conclusion that we can all make this community better for all that will cross its path in the future. Thank you.
On Monday, August 5th, 2024, this school board made the historic decision to bring revised Title IX into this district when they passed Policy 2264 at that meeting. There should be no policy in our school district that allows biological boys into girls' bathrooms and locker rooms, or biological girls into boys' bathrooms and locker rooms. Those who voted to approve this policy voted against the safety of each and every child in this district. I would like to thank school board members Megan Keller, Earl Peterson, and Dean Ackman for voting against Policy 2264. As for those who voted to pass Policy 2264, I ask for their resignations, the four board members, as well as, as well as District Administrator Peggy Larson, based on her promotion of this policy and the inconsistent responses she is giving when speaking about this policy.
I'm Diane Cozer, and I live in Winnicott County. I wonder how many students have been taken out of the Winnicott County District over the past four years because of harmful policies school board members have implemented and forced on them. Revised Title IX is another extremely damaging policy the board has passed, and the kids are its primary target. Thank you to the three board members who had the strength and courage to vote against it. The four board members who voted for revised Title IX have shown us that you are either unwilling or unable to protect our Winnicott County students. Instead, you have chosen to put them at risk in our schools, which have become unsafe places for them to be. Parents should not have to remove their kids from the schools that they fund in order to protect them from our school board's policies. You have let us down and failed the students you are educating. You can still choose to remove revised Title IX as the people you represent want you to do. If not, I ask that the four board members who voted to pass it and the district administrator all resign your positions.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on the issue of growing concern in this community. How can we support our transgender and gender non-conforming students while addressing the spread of misinformation, particularly from the far-right groups? Let's begin with what's clear. Every student deserves to feel safe, valued, and respected in our schools regardless of their gender identity. This isn't just a legal obligation under Title IX, but a moral one. We know that when students feel accepted, included, and their academic performance will improve, mental health outcomes are better, and the overall school climate is more positive for everyone. However, we're increasingly seeing a wave of harmful misinformation aimed at delegitimizing the experiences of transgender students. These narratives claim that supporting trans youth through affirming policies harms others or even goes against students' best interests. This misinformation is not just false, it's dangerous. It stigmatizes trans students and creates a hostile environment, making them more vulnerable to bullying, mental health issues, and even self-harm. So how can we go, stand against these attacks while ensuring all our students remain inclusive and safe in our schools? A few actionable items are to implement comprehensive training for staff, strengthen anti-bullying policies, educate the community with facts, and this one I would like to stress by adding, misinformation thrives in the absence of knowledge. Students can play an active role in educating, or schools can play an active role in educating the students and their parents. We can lean on GLSEN or the Trevor Project for more information here. We can establish safe spaces and support networks, and we can engage in empathy and dialogue. And I think that's where most of us want to be today. In conclusion, it is our responsibility as educators and community leaders to stand firm in our commitment to inclusivity. Supporting our transgender students is not a political stance, it's about ensuring that all young people have the opportunity to learn and grow in an environment free from fear and prejudice. Gender affirmation and inclusion literally saves lives. Let's be proactive in creating this culture where every student is treated with dignity. Let's push back against harmful narratives we see to divide us, and together we can ensure all students, regardless of who they are, can walk into schools knowing they belong.
Your time is up.
Sorry, excuse my nerves again, guys. Hello, my name is Katie Calowards, I live at 436 Jefferson Street here in Winnicott County. I have three young children in the district, and I am choosing to speak tonight for several reasons. One being my disappointment in the passing of the revised Title IX, along with the passing of the personal device ban. I do not want to speak for others, but I have talked to many parents who feel the same way. No, my children do not have phones currently, but they do have watches, and in the event that they wish to contact me, they should be able to do so at an appropriate time. I would like to ask the board for both of these policies to be brought back to the table for a revote. Another concern I have is regarding the newly adopted Title IX policy and the article that was put in the Winnicott County News. The article states that if a student wishes to use the bathroom or locker room of the opposite gender, that they have to have a specific plan in place with the school counselor, teachers, and admin. The policy does not say that, though, does it? This article is misleading. I also want to point out that this was not law, and I feel that Jackie was pressured by the district lawyer to vote yes. Our school is technically legally exempt due to the injunction because students of parents in the group Moms for Liberty attend here. Did you know that? I watched the Oshkosh School Board meeting last week where this was tabled yet again, and I found that lawyer to be easier to understand and more transparent. I also would love a Q and A with parents... I also would love a Q and A with parents and the lawyer, please. Did you also know that to this date, no school has lost federal funding due to not adopting Title IX? When I asked my children what they thought about a person of the opposite sex coming into the bathroom, my eight-year-old replied that I would not go or hold it, or I would have to use the stall, I guess. My 10-year-old daughter replied, "It would be very weird, but I guess as long as he doesn't show me his privates, it would be okay." In conclusion, I would like to make it clear that I am not against any gender or orientation. I don't know where the disconnect lies, but I'm not hateful, phobic, or of anyone. I do not judge children on their gender, religion...
Can we wrap it up, please?
Yep, I am. Two sentences. Skin color, family wealth, or anything else. I love all children, I want to protect all children. For me, it's not political. It's not about being gay, straight, black, pink, purple. It's just about our children, period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Laura Ackman. I live in Larson, Wisconsin. Today, I sent the board my commentary regarding your attorney, Mr. Running's continuing misrepresentation of Wisconsin Statute 118.13 and the PI-9. Mr. Running continues to state that these statutes include the term "gender," and it clearly does not. As you are aware from my email, I have checked several sources, and so far have unanimous agreement that these statutes have not been changed to reflect the word "gender." Therefore, the implied threat placed on this board in swaying the vote of this board has created a concern by myself and others. While I believe the intent of this board is to follow the law, I don't believe your attorney represented the information in a unbiased manner, which I also covered with you under separate cover. I am glad that the board has agreed to listen to the concerns of parents and to continue to discuss the merits of this new policy and how to proceed. I will say that I recently attended the Oshkosh Board meeting, where I thought their attorney did a very nice job outlining the situation. Feel free to listen to this, because you will have an alternate opinion. The Department of Education asked for the emergency meeting of the Supreme Court, which was denied over the weekend, and they clearly said the preliminary injunction relief continues. Just as one additional point I would like to call out, it has been said, "I am not sure why this is such a big deal, it already exists in our old policy." This is a point that should not go unnoticed. Based on so many conversations with your school parents, they certainly were not aware of this. This is another counterpoint to your philosophy to be transparent. Once the dust settles on the current situation in hand, I think we should explore in understanding the following. Why was the language put in the previous policy when there was certainly no legal requirement to do so? Why were parents not made of this change? The way policies are reviewed at the board meeting would not necessarily flag a parent to a major content change. We have asked the board to be much more open and transparent, and I hope you see by the response you are getting from your parents that this needs to be addressed immediately so everyone truly understands what is being contemplated and communicated. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Chris Cabot, 8344 Valley View Circle, Larson, Wisconsin, 54947. Find my pocket. I just want to carry off of Laura's speech here. A new policy was passed August 4th or 5th, right? That's 2264 that superseded 2266. I'm just going to repeat that. A new policy was passed, so it must be different than the previous policy, otherwise we would not have a new policy. So, there are differences in there. Obviously, there are differences. So, we can't say that there is nothing that has changed. So, that's really confusing to me. I've heard people say that there are no changes. It would be great if we could have some sort of layman's terms laid out and explain what the changes are from Policy 2266 to Policy 2264, so we can understand really what has changed at this time if the policies hold. The next thing is with everything that is going on, I would like to understand what policy could be set in place to help protect my children that are in the school and all the other children. I asked my 11-year-old daughter just today with everything she's heard. I asked her if she feels safe behind closed doors at the school. She said no. That's really disturbing to me, and it worries me, right? And I'm not looking for reeducation of my daughter or parents. I'm looking for a policy that will help protect these children.
Krista Lee. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. It starts with a B, I believe. Krista Lee, okay. Could you make sure you state your name, please?
Krista Lee Brenwood. I'm an alumni of this school. I went to this school when this was the back of the school right here. This was the exit door right here. That's when I went to this school. All right. I've heard a lot about so-called law at this meeting tonight. You might want to fire that guy sitting over there, because what I got here is actual law. It's called the First Amendment of the United States. And you might be going, "Why is she talking about the First Amendment?" Because the policy that this board adopted last week violates the First Amendment of the United States. Let me read it to you. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion." Religion! You are worshiping Baphomet. I don't want you guys to get that twisted. Maybe you think I'm some sort of crazy Christian woman? Okay, well, I'll take that label, because I am. You're worshiping Baphomet. You are bowing down to Baphomet. You want to know what that is? Go look it up on Google, you'll see a picture of what it is. So you just established the religion of Baphomet here in my hometown, and I'm pissed. And that's a word I can say that's in the dictionary. Or, "Of the press, the right of the people peaceably to assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances." Okay, why am I mentioning the First Amendment? Because the policy that you just adopted compels speech. And I have a list here, pages, of what the Supreme Court of the United States laid out that you cannot compel speech. So when you are telling these students that they have to, "Ooh, magically, you have to go by these pronouns that these people want, whatever they make up, out of Fantasyland, and that our students here and parents must use them," that's compelled speech. It's a violation of First Amendment, and you are all violating that law. You understand? That's a lawsuit.
Gay Anderson, 5382 County Road G, Winnicottany. I'm going to make some remarks that might seem over the top, so I better introduce myself to the crowd. I'm a physician and psychiatrist. I used to be wardmaster on the forensic unit at Winnebago, and I worked at the Wisconsin Resource Center with numerous sexual predators for a number of years. I should have come forward a long time ago when this dilemma started, and I apologize to the board for not doing that. In any event, what I'm going to tell you is there is no credible scientific evidence that transgenderism is real. Homosexuality, bisexuality, heterosexuality are all real, well-documented scientifically. I participated in some of the research myself. So, my recommendation is that the board reconsider their vote. In deference to your attorney, bad law deserves to be overturned and disobeyed. Now, reality is on our side, because the people that will argue for the transgender nonsense have no scientific basis. So I would suggest you vote the other way on your Title IX. Turn your vote around, and then come out with a statement to the district that the Winnicottany School District does not recognize transgenderism, and anybody professing it that causes disruption in the school will be appropriately disciplined for bad behavior, because that's what it is. I'll leave you with a final thought. Over 150 years ago, young Abraham Lincoln in the courtroom used to pose this question to the jury. He would ask them, "If you call a tail a leg, how many legs does a dog have?"
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
And a lot of people answered five, but the correct answer is four, because calling a tail a leg does not make it a leg.
Cynthia Atten?
My name is Cynthia Atten. We moved here to Winnicottany from Chicago suburbs of Illinois. I've lived this, I've been through this. It's not pretty. It's not going to get any better. One thing I want to point out to you, and the reason that I'm here right now, is the final recommendations that were filed by the Biden administration are executive order. And I think we need to kind of understand and read the definition of executive order for not just us, but for everybody here involved. An executive order is a declaration made by the president that has the force of law but is not considered a law because it does not go through the legislative process. Executive orders are usually based on existing statutory powers and don't require any action from Congress. They are directives that the president issues to the executive branch and to manage the federal government's operations. Executive orders can be used for any domestic matter, such as clarifying or extending existing laws or directing executive officers. Executive orders are not binding on everyone, but only on employees of the executive branch. They are subject to judicial review and can be overturned if they lack support from the Constitution or statute, or if the court declares them unconstitutional. Congress can also try to make it difficult for an executive officer to be, an executive order, excuse me, to be carried out by passing legislation such as removing funding. Finally, a sitting president can overturn an existing order by issuing another executive order to that effect. And I ask you now, and I ask every parent here right now, what are we raising, wolves or sheep?
All right, that is the list of people I have that wish to speak. So at this point, I'm going to close the open forum, and we will move into the business of the board meeting. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Motion by Kundy, second by Virich to approve consent agenda. Any questions or discussion from the board?
I have just one added correction, and that is of the last board meeting high school presentation on the Italy and Greece trip. And I apologize, as the board minutes were put together, however, it was omitted through updating and so on, that report is not included but will be added, as we certainly appreciated the report that we had from the staff as well as the students that attended the trip.
A roll call, please.
Stelzner?
Is that to approve the consent agenda as you mentioned?
Correct.
Aye.
Virich?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ackman?
Aye.
Kundy, aye, Hanson?
Aye.
At this point, the board will be involved in a discussion of Title IX?
Point of information, can you provide details on how a failed motion returned to the next agenda? What is the process for a failed motion to return on the second agenda?
I believe at the, I would have to go back and review, but I believe it was requested that we get additional information regarding Title IX and to be put back on the agenda for the first board meeting in August.
I have a question for Attorney Lacy. In light of, and I understand how Friday's Supreme Court decision really doesn't technically impact what's going on in Wisconsin, but my question is, as a lawyer myself, reading the case, to me, the writing's on the wall with Title IX and the whole gender identity part of it, maybe not the whole policy part of it. And my question is, can this board, or what would be the consequences if this board decided to adopt the policy as is minus the gender identity language?
Sure. So, a couple things there. Number one, the court's order, like you said, does reference kind of the standard for preliminary injunction, which, again, like I mentioned, is likelihood of success on the merits. But, you know, there are entire groups of people who make a career out of guessing what the Supreme Court is going to do and are more often wrong than not. So, you can't take that as an indication of anything relative to where they are. I also remind everybody that the same court essentially, actually a slightly more liberal court now than previously, rendered a similar decision under the Title VII context in a case called Bostock, where they said gender identity, excuse me, gender identity is within the context of sex, that term. So what they're ultimately going to do is anybody's guess, really. In terms of your question, adopting the policy without that gender identity, nonconformant, stereotyping, language, et cetera, I would say, to me, when I look at advising the board as to what puts you in the best position from protecting your legal position, number one would be adopting the policy as it's established based on what the regulations say, whether we like it or not. The next level down would be what you suggest, which is to say that we change that language to say essentially that this policy prohibits sex discrimination as that term is defined in applicable law, because that's the key issue. You're still, as a district, going to have to follow the law. You're going to have to address complaints that come in that are, you know, sex discrimination complaints, but based on, excuse me, an individual's gender, nonconformance, et cetera. So that's still going to be the case, that you're going to have to investigate, and you're going to have to deal with those complaints. But, so I would say, you can take that language out, but you can't change the law at the school board level. You can't... The Seventh Circuit supersedes any decision that this board makes or any decision that the Kansas court makes.
Okay, we're not taking comments from the public right now. Thank you.
Well, I can just speak to that real briefly, just for the sake of completeness. The injunction applies to the Department of Ed. It does not apply, and it can't apply, to this school district or any other school district in Wisconsin, because you're not a party to that case. It applies to the Department of Education. It does not say that the regulations are invalid in Wisconsin. It says the Department of Ed cannot enforce them in places, and that's a significant distinction because most of these cases involve private lawsuits, not Department of Ed enforcement, because it's accurate to say the likelihood of the Department of Ed taking funding away is remote in any context. The upshot of the injunction would be that they would not be able to process complaints either that came from students in any of those covered schools, but that does not. And in fact, there was a Wisconsin Eastern District judge in a case involving the Elkhart Area School District that said that injunction has absolutely no practical impact on the right of individuals to bring private lawsuits in federal court. to bring private lawsuits in federal court regardless of whether they are relating to a school where one of the filed Moms for Liberty attendees is attending. So that's the way the courts are handling it. And to put the district in the best position to deal with those issues in the event that they arise in a lawsuit, again, context, I would say adopt the policy, but a second place finish would be what you described. And we'd still have to, you know, process complaints and so forth as they arise. And you would do that under any number of contexts. Bullying policy is, makes no difference what the basis of the, you know, negative treatment towards a particular student. So you're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to address those issues to the extent that they arise, no matter what. But.
Thank you. So thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. We have and always will continue to address harassment and bullying and all of those types of things. We have policies in place for that. For that reason, with Policy 5517 and Policy 2260 still in place, I would like to make a motion to remove Policy 2264.
If you, if you would please respect this meeting and let us conduct our business, I would greatly appreciate it. I do have a motion to-
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Dean.
Ackman.
Okay, I have a motion by Keller, second by Ackman, to rescind Policy Title-
Remove Policy 2264, please.
Removing Policy 2264. Okay. Other discussion from the board?
I would like Mr. Lacy to comment on the consequences of removing 2264 rather than simply modifying it to remove the gender identity language.
Well, again, it, because the policy is, and I should say, the inclusion of gender nonconformance, gender stereotypes, and gender identity, there's also pregnancy-related conditions and sexual orientation, but those are firmly entrenched in Wisconsin law already anyway. The, those inclusions, those items of inclusion within the regs are but a very small percentage or a very small portion of the regulations. The vast majority of them actually are procedural in nature in terms of how you have to investigate complaints. They provide a lot more flexibility, quite frankly, to your administration to deal with things in a more efficient manner, you know, to have more informal measures, et cetera. So the practical implication is that, number one, like I said, you still have to follow the law. You still have to entertain and investigate and make determinations regarding complaints involving gender identity. And you're doing so without the policy that is the current required set of, you know, procedural requirements under federal law. And it's a regulation, to be clear, not an executive order. Executive order, different thing altogether. This is a regulation. So the first thing that you're always asked when you're defending a claim, whether it's in federal court or whether it's in front of an agency, is where's your policy? Where's your notice? Where is the, in this case, evidence that you've provided? Training based on the policy and the regulations? And so with the inability to do any of that, you put yourself in a, in a position where you're behind the eight ball, so to speak, in terms of defending your actions. This is also the case if there's a private litigant that sues the school district as an individual. Makes no difference whether the Department of Ed has enforcement or there's an injunction against the Department of Ed. A private individual can bring that suit. And typically, our first line of defense is that we have compliant policies and we follow them. So there's, you know, that, that's a difficult situation that arises. The other thing, in that same context, the insurance companies, one, CI, the community insurance, and ultimately prefacing, preface this statement with, ultimately, it's their decision, and I have no idea how they would handle an actual claim. But they recently put out a statement that essentially said, you are supposed to have these policies. We view this as the law, and did not go so far as to say that they would deny a claim. But it's certainly a consideration that I'd be concerned about and, you know, potentially even a reservation of rights in the event that there is a complaint filed. And even if you ultimately are successful in defending your actions, litigation is extremely expensive. You don't want to jeopardize your insurance coverage for a policy situation that you're going to have to follow anyway.
I'm assuming you're not a Title IX expert, right? So my question is, do you understand the three things that a school is required via Title IX to have? Every school must have and distribute a policy, which, do we have a policy regarding discrimination? It's not just in general, doesn't include sex. It's very broad. It just says discrimination. That would check one box. Do we have a Title IX coordinator? Yes, we're required to have that. And then the third thing is to make sure that the policies are known. We, one, we have to have a policy that says we can't discriminate. We have to have a Title IX coordinator. And then we have to make the policy and procedures known on how to file a complaint. All three boxes are checked. So is our responsibility to the Title IX have been met. We're not in any legal trouble by meeting those statements of what the actual amendment is, if you go into that. A little bit of background, I spent 10 years at the college level as a Title IX coordinator for three different schools. So I can speak a little bit more adequately to being closer to a subject matter expert than everybody to my left. So there are three things that are required. There are three things that we've met. We have responsibilities to make sure that we promptly and effectively administer those policies against discrimination. Again, it's not just for sex. We've eliminated that. And even if there isn't any intent or file to a complaint, we still have to go through the procedure. So if it is known or made known, we have a policy that says we will investigate, including using law. So we've met the three categories that we have to set in front of the amendment plus the three responsibilities of every institution. So it is, I would close the forum and go to vote.
Anyone else from the board have any discussion?
I would like to just hear a little follow-up to those points from our attorney as far as.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, I think what you, what you say is largely accurate, although prior to the 2020 regs in Title IX, all the regulations said is that you have to have a grievance procedure. That's it. So we, we used, like you described, typical or, you know, more general, if you will, nondiscrimination policies. But that changed, the 2020 regs under the prior administration included significant specificity and dictates as to how you had to conduct investigations. You no longer were allowed to just simply rely on a more generic grievance procedure, which I would say worked just fine. But that's not what the regulations said as of 2020. And these regulations, you know, carry that concept forward and continue to create a very prescriptive investigatory procedural requirement. So if you don't have the policy and a circumstance arises, certainly our defense is going to be, we complied with the spirit of the law. We had a process. We had a procedure and we followed it and we protected the rights of individuals. Absolutely. But it's not accurate to say that the current regulations and the 2020 regulations describe, they do describe, they do require a particular set of investigatory procedures. And that's predominantly what this policy covers, is procedural requirements that differ from what we had to do in 2020 and then what we did in a much more relaxed atmosphere, if you will, from a procedural standpoint prior to that.
And I just want to add, the, the, in, the case that came out on Friday, there, there's a dissenting opinion where the, what you'd call liberal justices who normally probably would be very pro Title IX in the form that the Biden-Harris administration issued these new regs. But they're commenting on the process of the policy. I, I mean, I cannot support getting rid of the policy. I can support getting rid of the gender identity language in the current policy that was passed two weeks ago.
So we have a motion on the table to remove Title IX. It's been seconded. If there's no other questions from board members, I would take a roll call on that, please.
Call for amendment?
I mean, if, if Meghan's willing to amend her motion to retain the policy eliminating the gender identity language, it's up to Meghan.
The current motion is to eliminate and remove Title IX, yes.
Well, the maker of the motion can agree to a friendly amendment but doesn't have to.
They can. Meghan, can you respond?
I, Jill, I appreciate your willingness to try-
We are not taking comments from the public at this point, please.
I appreciate you trying to find some common ground here. Where I struggle is, I do believe that after combing this policy quite a bit, there is a new policy here for a reason. This isn't an amended old policy, and for that reason, I'm not changing my motion.
Can I, I just want to-
Again, I'm going to ask you to respect the business of this board. And if you're not going to do that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Just, that was mentioned, I think, the new policy versus amended policy. One of the reasons that that's done that way in this instance, just for your knowledge, it doesn't really make much difference substantively, but you're required to retain the old policy in force because it continues to apply to any conduct that is part of a complaint that occurred prior to August 1st of 2024. And then you have to have this new policy that applies to anything that occurs after 2024. So that's the design of the regulations. It requires us to essentially have two overlapping, in some respects, in terms of content, or in terms of scope, policies for some amount of time, at least until such time as there are no longer any complaints involving pre-August 1st, 2024 conduct. So it's kind of a weird scenario. That's very unusual, but that's why you see, you know, that 2266 remains and 2264 is technically a new policy, but covers the same territory, so to speak.
Okay, roll call, please.
Stelsner?
The motion is to remove Title IX, the Title IX policy.
The 2260?
Yes.
No.
To remove 2264.
No.
Virich?
No.
Keller?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ackman?
Aye.
Kundi? No. Hanson?
No.
The vote was four to three to not remove the Title IX policy, number 2264.
Okay, is there, is there any more, is there any more? I would, I would require that you be quiet. I will adjourn the meeting. Is there, is there any other discussion on? Any other?
I guess, as long as we're not going to remove it completely, can we look more into the getting rid of some of the language, Jill, and figuring out how to make something work so that it's not just all or nothing? I don't know what that looks like. I don't know what that means. We have to go to Neola and get it completely redone. I don't know if we can just cross stuff out. I don't know how that works exactly.
I, I do, I do believe the intention of this board is to find a common ground. It's difficult to do. But if you're, if you're asking to do that and bring it back, and I'm going to clearly state, so there's no question, to bring it back to our next board meeting, we, I feel like there's some things that we could dig into and discuss as a board with counsel.
So how, how does that happen? Who's responsible for doing what? How do we know what's accurate and what's not? All of those things.
There was a couple of points made here tonight. I heard from a couple of individuals. And I would appreciate them coming with questions, you know, real concrete questions. There was a lot of commentary on feelings and emotions, and I understand that with this. But I really would like to get some real questions that maybe can be presented and brought forth and we can, like we have in a number of cases, and we can forward them for instruction or an answer to some of those, maybe beyond of what was even mentioned tonight. I do agree with what Donna said. You know, we are all in favor of the betterment of our children, all children, and we do care for our children here in the district and to find common ground.
I can, I could tell you that that has been the approach, I would say, in a number of districts. And we can pretty easily amend that language in the policy to remove. It's really essentially about two or three sentences in the policy that specifically reference, again, gender identity, gender stereotypes, and gender nonconformance. So striking those words and just leaving the, this policy prohibits sex discrimination as provided by law, which is obvious, then. In any event, that's, that's certainly something that we could readily do if that board wanted to go that direction. And obviously, it's up to you, but you certainly could do that, you know, even tonight if you wanted.
So do you, do you want this back on the agenda then for the September, I believe, 16th or something like that is our next meeting? You want to do it, you want to do it tonight? Well, is there a motion?
I would move to amend. I make a motion to remove reference in policy number, I should know this by now, 2264, to remove all references to gender identity.
I'll second their motion.
Just, can I ask just a clarification? Gender identity, gender stereotyping, and gender nonconformance, those are the three terms that are under, I don't want to, I don't want to get it wrong.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Could I, could I just ask a quick question of you, sir? So if we move forward with this and get rid of those terms in this policy, what else in this policy is different from the- the prior to August 1st version?
Yeah, quite, quite a bit of the, of the procedures. Again, like I mentioned, there's specific timelines that had to be added in that, that weren't required in the prior policy. There's more ability for the Title IX coordinators to act as investigator and decision-maker. There's reduced appellate procedures to make it more streamlined. Essentially, one of the problems we run into with some of these procedures is that it's difficult to make them comport with our strict requirements under Wisconsin law when there's overlapping issues, because we're talking about, you know, gender identity in that context, but that is not the sum total of what this policy and what this law covers. Most of the complaints have nothing to do with that issue. So, the timelines, we had to include. There's also, like I said, greater authority to engage in informal procedures. It doesn't require complainants to make written complaints. You can take an oral complaint, which is how the vast majority of them come in. So, there are a lot of changes in the substantive, I'm sorry, in the procedural area. The substantive is just relative to that additional definitional item that the regulations added. So, and we could certainly, you know, provide you kind of with a, with a comparison of the two, but as you know, the policy gets kind of lengthy. But it is procedural in nature.
Excuse me, we have a motion to retain Title IX, eliminating the definition of sexual identity, nonconformist, and I'm sorry, there was one more.
It's gender stereotyping, gender nonconformance, and gender identity.
Okay.
Like I said, it also adds sexual orientation and pregnancy-related conditions, but those are already covered under Wisconsin law explicitly.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Roll call, please.
Verich?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Peterson? Ackman?
Aye.
Cundy?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
The motion passed with the amendment...
No, you forgot Jackie.
I'm sorry, Jackie?
Aye.
The motion passed with the amendment six to one.
All right. Moving on to 2425 Teacher Handbook.
See the updates to the handbook on page three. There's a blank page behind the cover page. So, those were all the updates to the handbook.
Okay. I, I had one question regarding the mentoring.
Yes.
Okay, the fee for the mentoring.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, why is that paid over two years?
Um, it's a two-year mentoring program, so their mentor stays with them for two years.
Okay.
Yeah, we just feel like that continued support through the second year.
Yeah.
And obviously, all of our teachers help all teachers out continually, but we just feel it's really important they continue that relationship for two years versus one.
So, it's, it's 250 a semester for two years.
Right.
Okay.
I would like to say something also. I don't know what page number it's on in your, in the handbook, but on page 70 of the board packet, it did have something that should be removed, and it had something...
Jackie, could I ask you to speak into the speaker, please? Thank you.
Okay. On page 70 of your packet, I don't know what page it was on in the actual handbook, but there was a bolded item in there that I feel should be removed. It asked, kind of said that right on the page. Should this...
Yes, Jackie, Julie is already taking care of that. Thank you for pointing that out. But would you, Jackie, remind me of that other minor change about the...
The other minor change, it was also on that same page. It did not, in all the other places, it addressed, let's see, Child's Move-In Day.
Yep.
And it didn't, it's addresses College Move-In Day, but this said Child Move-In Day.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, motion, please?
So move.
Second. Motion by Cundy, second by Hanson, to approve the 2425 Teacher Handbook. Roll call, please.
Verich?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ackman?
Aye.
Cundy?
Aye.
Stelsner?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
2425 Support Staff Handbook.
Same process. On page three of that handbook are all the updates to, um, changes to the Support Staff Handbook.
I move to approve the 202425 Support Staff Handbook.
Is that you, Earl?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Keller, to approve the 2425 Support Staff Handbook. Roll call, please.
Keller?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ackman?
Aye.
Cundy?
Aye.
Verich?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Request to move the October Board Meeting and Annual Meeting Date from October 21st to October 28th. I did request this to be changed, as I will be out of the country on October 21st, and I really feel that it's important for, to be at the annual meeting. So, it's my request.
It also gives Monica a little more time with her reports that she has to do as well. I move to change the October 21st Board Meeting and Annual Meeting to October 28th.
Second. I'll second. Ackman?
Okay. Motion by Verich, second by Ackman, to approve moving the October Board Meeting, the second October Board Meeting, and the Annual Meeting Date to October 28th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ackman?
Aye.
Cundy?
Aye.
Verich?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Administrative reports, any additions from the administration or questions from the board?
I had just a couple, one for Lauren. The numbers that you have in here for the at-risk were from last year, or, I believe you indicated that you would give us a projection for this year.
So, I will get that to you within the next week or two, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, I had one other question for Monica, and I apologize, Monica. I did talk with you today on a couple of things. At prior meetings, you had given us an update as far as expenditures from our referendum on our middle school. Do you think you could give us an update as far as where we are with the monies?
But it has been relatively slow as of late, but it just started picking up in the last, I'd say, the last two to three weeks that we're starting to get bills. I can sort of think of that.
And I appreciate that, because I did see about a $2 million payment tomorrow, and so, I appreciate an update. So, thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, and Board Reports, any communications?
There is no communications.
Committee Reports, Human Resources and Finance?
Uh, we'll be discussing the, we, we had a meeting. It's for a closed session.
Okay. Marketing and Public Relations?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, and Policy?
Uh, we do have a number of policies coming. And just to as well let our visitors know, we appreciate you at our meetings. And for our policies, we do have a Policy Committee meeting. The policies go to the committee, they are reviewed, and from the committee meeting, then they are presented to the board. So, you can watch our agendas, and I believe they are also on our website. So, the policies are listed, and they are discussed prior to coming to the meeting for a vote. And so, we do have a number of policies that we will be reviewing. But as they come out of Policy Committee, I will let you know that there is major discussion to make sure that these policies are what the committee is wanting to bring forward. So, I appreciate the, the mention of that, because, like I say, there are a number. And we go through these policies on a rotation, just as the conversation tonight. There's revisions to policies on an ongoing basis. So, this is not a new procedure of the board. I'd just like to reiterate the fact, if you've got questions, you know, watch the, the agendas and so on as the policies are coming forward.
Okay, and with that, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Keller, second by Verich, to move into executive session under State Statute 19.85 to approve the executive session minutes from August 5th, 2024, under State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub E, deliberating or conducting specified business, public business, whenever competitive reasons require a closed session for competitive bids for health insurance self-funding. State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub C, considering performance evaluation data in any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility for continuing with the district administrator's evaluation process. State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub F, sub, sub B, considering personal history, which if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, to discuss teacher request to waiver, reduce liquidated damages. The board will move into open session and may take action on items discussed in closed session. Roll call, please.
Ackman?
Aye.
Cundy?
Aye.
Verich?
Aye.